Should've had some of them. Yeah, exactly.
Seventeen.
Right.
There's only some in there.
I'll take what I can get.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Don't drink your shit.
Relax.
You know, I'm hearing about the wine.
What are they finest?
It's an acquired taste.
You can get out. Or what, actually, you know what? It's not my call, it's your boss's call. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, this meeting was properly posted on October 7th. Looks like all, uh, primary members are in attendance today. Um, item number one, discussion possible action regarding the minutes of September 10th. The thirteen pages.
Hmm.
I did have one thing, and sorry, I talked to you the other day, and I didn't think on page 10, on the, um, the two and a half percent, uh, it has for an increase in salaries to use to the elected official's discretion, a merit increase. It shouldn't have an merit, it was just their discretion.
Okay, remove the merit.
And other than that, I probably don't want to be able to give it to people that don't merit it.
Okay. I move acceptance of the minutes with the, uh, amendment second.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? I just have, I just wanted to be clear because that was what it says.
I assume there would have been at least one correction. I'm glad you liked that a lot. I glazed over after about page six.
It was, it really read pretty well.
No, it did, it did. It did, she did a great job.
Not that nobody's done a great job in the past, but the way they flowed it was very good.
Thank you.
I'll link those up twice. Item two, discussion possible action regarding an update on employment benefits. John. Want to say good morning, but good afternoon. How about that? I'll pass these around real quick.
There's something on your salary table.
Is this different than what's? Same thing. It's just a little easier to read, it's not attached, okay. Well, the chair was to make us talk a part of the record without objections. Are you lost?
All right. So, um, Cassie, I know if this is one is smaller version, but can you shrink it just a little bit?
Yeah.
Not too much. Just so we can see maybe the left, right, a little bit. Right there's perfect. Perfect, perfect.
This is gonna make more people use the vision plan.
Yeah. So let's compare this, this kind of report, probably I get every month. It's your first report. Um, I compared this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year and where we're at. On medical, we paid one more week of claims. Claims are billed every week. Um, so this fiscal year, we paid fifteen versus same time last period, we paid fourteen. Um, we're up about a hundred sixty-seven thousand three percent. But really, just because we paid an extra week of claim. Our claim average, our weekly average this fiscal year is three hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars per week versus, um, three hundred fifty-one through the same period. So medical's looking really good. Prescription, apples to apples, same amount of claims, same week of claims. Kind of getting back into that, um, same week of claims. Um, so seventeen weeks. Um, our average this, this fiscal year is two hundred seventeen thousand. In the same period last fiscal year, the weekly average is two forty-three. So we're seeing a good improvement on that. Overall, we're twelve percent under where we were last fiscal year. Um, add those two together, uh, medical prescription, we're about three percent under. Can bring it down just a little bit. We kind of have something that skews it right here on our, our reimbursements that go back into the fund. Um, overall, we're doing pretty good. Our X rebate is just a timing issue. Those are gonna be issued a little later. They have a new company doing our rebates. So, um, we probably will get two instead of one in December. Um, so that should equal out. Overall, you know, that kind of skews the numbers, because we'll get that money. Overall, just looking at what's come through the door, we're about four percent over last fiscal year. And that's just due to that receiving less rebates. If you look at the claims overall, you know, we're under three percent. So very positive.
Well, in this time of the year, last year, we were doing well as well. So we're doing even better this year than we were last year compared to the previous year. So I think, so given the season that we're coming into, do you think that's gonna change it?
It goes up a little bit.
Yeah. End of the fiscal year is always.
So if you, if you look at this, good question. Because I averaged last fiscal year on the number of weeks that, you know, we paid. We, we averaged out the door, two hundred forty thousand dollars in actual cost on the medical plan per, per week, per invoice. This year, we're averaging two hundred seventeen. So we're way under last year's average.
What's the revenue side look like compared to next year?
Um, revenue side, I don't, I didn't put that on here. I asked for a couple of things on the budget. I haven't seen the final numbers, but, um, you know, we've put a little more money in this fiscal year, I know, in the budget. So, um, we'll do a little more from the premiums as well. Um, because we redid how we do premiums, employer premiums, so we'll have a little more money than thought. So overall, we're doing great, doing great. We have about one point five million dollars in bank pay claims now, cash available, which is nice. Um, we're doing our transfers, so everything is looking good. That's through three and a half months. Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you. No, it's not bad to ask for one. It's nice to know you're asking.
All right. Item thirty, discussion possible action regarding any items currently on the BET watch list. Are there any items on there that anybody wants to take up individually at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
The two items that the assessor has on the watch list for the reorganization and the postage, seeing that our general reserve balance is at nine point seven, we need to have our projects move forward. And I would like to make a recommendation that we fund those two items for the assessor's office today.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
The space for organization, is that the hallway?
Correct.
Yeah, building the teller windows into the existing hall.
Is that a project that you guys are able to do totally in-house? Or are you gonna have to get some bids or some contracts put together?
Our intentions are to work in-house. I talked with Chris about that. He said that they should be able to do that work in-house. But I can't do any cost estimates or unless I have funding. I have no way to pay for any of that. I don't have any.
Has he had the opportunity to come in and just give like a rough estimate as far as like materials needed or, um?
I have not asked him to do that because it's all about having funding in place prior to doing that work. But I talked with him in regards to some of the work the treasurer's done during the holiday. He says it can be very similar to doing the doorways and things that you've done, repairs for the security, plastering and all that. So it shouldn't be that issue at all.
Is he the one that's coming up with the hundred thousand dollar number?
That is the number that we placed onto, thinking that it would be anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand per window. And if it's under that, of course, the money would come back to the general fund. Would that have its own line item in the budget? It would, it would be designated specifically for that purpose and that purpose only. So if there was money held over from this year not being able to finish or something of the nature, it would stay there. I think that was the recommendation, we'd be adopted that way. Yeah, creating a line item in the county capital, if you know, for funding it through there. And it weighs trackable and solely for that purpose and that purpose only.
And then?
Let me ask one other question. Um, on the, the project, would I assume that the money being moved would be considered somehow the one-time funds? I think, I think our group needs to kind of, the way, the way we have our nine, right at the top, right under general fund reserve, I've kept, so we can always, yeah, see a screenshot of what the one-time funds.
Christie, is there a way out?
Yeah, I think that that would be appropriate use of that.
And I can delineate somehow, in some way, and I think that's a good idea.
The one would be?
Right, postage, which, no, I'm just wanting to make sure the group, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, we've got a motion to recommend to budget board a transfer from general fund reserve into county capital account and creating a line item in the county capital account for a hundred thousand dollars for the assessor's office for space reorganization and a fifty thousand dollar transfer from reserve into the assessor's general fund budget, a fifty thousand dollars for postage increase.
What's second?
And the first for one-time funds. Second from?
Yeah.
I'll go either.
Okay. Got a motion? Christie, you second it?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Ayes have it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna skip forward for just a moment. Uh, item five, discussion possible action regarding September supplement corrected merit pay calculations by department. I do have a question on item three again. Okay. Does, does item, since we're on item five, did that change the number on the watch list for the other half percent? Where do we know? Like, in other words, we have enough allocated on watch list for the other half percent? I might see those. So it looks like on item five, we're making a correction to the calculation for the merit pay, right?
Yes.
Based on that two and a half percent that was given?
Yes.
Okay, so then would that affect the half percent that's on the watch list?
It does, and I think the numbers on that attachment, is that right?
Yes.
So do we need to modify that number since we're here talking about it on number three? If not, we do, I just, I just wanted to make sure there was enough on there.
I think, I think it was, wasn't it like down a thousand and seventy-five dollars or something? I think for the point five, a thousand seventy-five and change, maybe?
A thousand three seventy-three.
Yeah, I'm good with that then. I want to make sure that.
Cassie, I think it's all the way at the bottom of that attached document.
Oh, you mean at the? Yeah, right there. Yeah.
Up a little bit more. Right there. Yeah, a thousand seventy-five dollars and seventeen cents is a reduction in the amount that we need to hold on the watch list for the back half, half a percent, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, uh, we can, based on the action on five, we can just have Christie make that adjustment on the watch list. That's a good catch there for me. All right. Albert, are you doing this one or who's doing this?
I mean, where you want me to go?
Scroll.
Okay.
All right, yeah, there you go. Okay. Yeah. Right there. Okay. When, this was in my ear, uh, kind of based off of what we've done, um, on these moves last year, but the stipend and awards amount. But when Jennifer went through and started looking at the actual estimate needs, uh, what was actually that on stipend and awards is what was actually, what needs to be there, what was on the estimate needs that was approved. So that's why we have the correction on the merit, which affects the ending result on the totals there. Once you go off what was actually on the estimate needs for those merit amounts.
So the, the two and a half percent was under calculated, so we, we need more?
Yes.
And what doesn't make sense to me, you know, I was getting into this when we discussed this item, um, the half a percent, if two and a half percent was too low, how's the half a percent not also?
The half percent's going up.
No.
No, he has the half percent lowering by a thousand.
I don't think, I don't think that's right. But that's not, no, I don't think that's right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but the half percent brings up like two forty-four and change on the watch list, it's two thirty-eight. Yeah, it's a thousand dollars lower on the watch list.
Oh, I thought you.
No, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It should be less.
I thought you were saying that the thousand seventy-five was, it was less needed, okay.
So we're adding one thousand seventy-five.
Okay. So because total, can't go back and go up? Because, oh, we're back, we're back up to the, right there. So the five, the two and a half, you have fifty-three there, which is, you'll have to increase, that's an increase for the two and a half. And then you have the increase of the thousand or the half percent as well, which should come the next six something. You scroll down, Cassie.
For twenty thousand?
Yeah. I thought it was a total. But those both of them have somewhere on there. Can you scroll down a little bit? Should be on there. Go up. Maybe the fifty-three plus the thousand and five is what we need to increase on the merit pay part.
Okay, is everybody clear?
So essentially then, the general fund reserve balance, since we got to find five thousand, we just lower that?
Yeah. It'd be a transfer from reserve. I, but I don't know where we're gonna say it's going to because that's a, the whole bunch of different accounts.
Correct, yeah. Uh, whether departments affected in the gallows hall in there.
There was like a jury report from the.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, no, that's, that's a stipend.
That's a stipend. So this is throughout basically all of them?
Yeah.
A lot of you. I mean, so we're talking fifty-three hundred dollars over every single department or elected official though?
Um, it's gonna be really expensive notice in the paper for that mention.
Right, that's what I mean, it's gonna be a hundred dollars a piece.
We're gonna pay more for paying the notice and the.
And maybe we just let it ride and figure it out at the end of the year when we come to that time if we're short on salaries. Fifty-three hundred dollars to a small department's one thing.
Yeah, but the problem is if we don't shore it up now, then we're gonna be chasing our tail next year with people coming in, oh, I'm, you know, sixty-seven dollars short and I'm, you know, eighty-five dollars short.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah.
I mean, I guess we could just do a, on budget board, it could be a transfer from reserve in an amount of, and we put the amount into, uh, general fund salary accounts and then just have the accounts linked in an attachment.
Is that somebody's motion?
It sounded like yours.
I don't make motions unless I absolutely have to.
Someone? Second.
Got a motion in a second? That, that'll be a transfer in reserve for the five thousand and three hundred and whatever dollars. And then it will also be Christie adjusting the, the watch list. Got a motion second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Ayes got it? Item six, discussion possible action regarding new position for a Microsoft applications trainer. Who can also be utilized as a backup receiving officer and inventory clerk. Uh, starting salary for the position for six months is twenty-two-five plus benefits, being under forty-four hundred. Um, I had talked to Dane about this in the past. Um, and we, we kind of started talking about it again. We had a need quite a while back for some folks having Excel training and some, you know, different Microsoft pieces. And our social services department used to offer that. They had a trainer and lots of folks utilize that. Haven't really done that in a while. I talked to Dane quite a while ago about it and he had a really good idea on this and, and came to me. And so he had put this on there, so Dane, if you wanna.
Yeah, absolutely. We've got a, excuse me, we've got a unique opportunity here to add a person that can, uh, do Microsoft applications training, whether it's Excel or Outlook or Word or, uh, some of the new Teams, all the, um, or three sixty-five applications that are built in. We had used several of them within our own department and saw great use out of them. I think they could probably benefit the county in other areas too, if people just, number one, knew they were there, number two, and then knew how to use them and had someone to teach them how to use them. Um, and that's kind of what we're seeking here. We've got an opportunity to bring in someone who was an Excel trainer, Word, or not just the county, but I think the general public as well. And here's an opportunity for that person to come in, uh, really not a super large salary to come in and do this. Uh, this also helps shore up as far as our, you know, the backup inventory clerk thing. I came to you guys a couple of years ago with the idea that Augie is going to be leaving at the end of this fiscal year or so, thinking ahead. Our office is gonna look very, very different in twenty twenty-six. We're gonna lose a lot of people retirement that just reached that age. This is another one. So this person can easily slide in and become that role when that time comes. So essentially, if you think about it, you kind of get a lot of, some of that money back within a year and a half.
You already, you already the person identified?
Yeah.
So, so you, so you know that they won't need, the only reason I ask is because, so you won't need health insurance? The reason I ask is that's not.
No. Well, I don't know. I actually don't know the answer to that because that person right now could be retired and thus would have it through retirement, but then if they came back.
Would they be stupid enough to take?
And I don't quite know how that works. Somebody retires and it comes back and goes to a different role.
Okay.
As a, as a retiree, there's no employer. Employer's share goes down.
Okay.
So when Dane came to me, the, the individual that used to do this is still at the county in social services. And social services department is going away on November one.
Right.
So this is a position that is already in the county. Now, they've not been doing this specifically in a few years, but this is something that they've done in the past. Dane feels like they can do it. The salary is already funded through social services. So we could, our recommendation could be a transfer from that social services budget, not from general fund reserve. So it wouldn't impact reserve. And then Dane would be able to start spinning up some training programs through their office. They've got that, we've not really spoken about this specifically, but in the past, you guys have that break room where you had multiple computers. We could set stuff up somewhere here in the county to where we could have three or four.
Somewhere in the county.
Well, not our break room anymore because it's not.
Training room anymore. If we gave up that space, not the other end of the hall, so.
Yeah. So the whole?
Yeah, dug into an old one.
No kidding.
The whole salary for the, for the full year is by the.
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, well, who, who's done the Microsoft training now?
Nobody.
Well, they're on YouTube. Well, some people just.
If you don't, if you don't know what's out there though, you don't know. And that's part of it is, is there is a whole host of applications that's built in three sixty-five that if you don't know they exist, you wouldn't exist. You're right, Jason, you could easily, if you know you want to use list, you could go watch a video or two on list. That's, that's perfectly valid, but if you don't know the list exists or, you know, but we, we get calls, you know, somewhat frequently for, hey, how do I do this, you know, in Excel? I don't know. I don't know, that's not what we do. It's not a skill set. We know how to install it, we know what to do when it's not running properly, but I can't tell you how to build a macro. I can't tell you how to build a table. I can't tell you how to do any of that stuff. I can't, I don't like Word, I don't want to work in Word. Um, I don't, there's tricks in Outlook that can be done that, you know, we get these calls. Um, and now with most of the county being on OneDrive, now we're getting OneDrive calls, we're getting SharePoint calls. Um, as more people are on Teams, we get Teams calls, so.
How would somebody avail themselves of this person's help?
Contact, contact help desk. It's just, it's just another help desk call.
And what I'm thinking.
This work, this position did exist before, but the social services.
Correct, it's something that was done under, under the guise of social services or back when it was training in general assistance before switched.
And how often was that you?
Oh, I have no idea.
Do you have a question for the help?
That was gonna be my question is, for the times that this position is not being utilized for training, do you envision other tasks?
Yes, that's why I've listed.
I mean, I know the backup receiving officer and inventory clerk.
Sure, it could turn into a help desk position as well as another person because I'm losing Alan at the end of the year. So, uh, and for everybody who loves to hear Alan's voice, get used to it now, you better call it now.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad I know now, so I can.
Yes, so if you want to say goodbye, you got two months.
Right.
Dane's been talking to me about backup positions and trying to fill some holes for a while. And he saw an opportunity that we can maybe start doing some training and fill those holes and not expand the number of positions that the county has, nor expand our liability from a salary standpoint. And kind of thought maybe we can fix all of it with this, um, just one change, so.
I mean, you're probably gonna hear from me at estimate needs in March for a backup programmer. I'm gonna lose an applications manager, that's a senior level position. I'm gonna lose a help desk administrator, we've got charitable, we're gonna do there. There are others coming down the road.
And I know some of those are very specialized.
Some of them are.
But if this position can fill in some gaps in other areas. I mean, I know receiving officer and inventory clerk.
Sure, it's not a big deal.
Right.
Now, for us, inventory is a big deal. I don't know how this, I'm sure we guys need to speak to you.
It is.
With everything you guys, but it's still for us, it's, there's a lot of stuff to keep up with and when the auditors come calling.
Oh, I know.
Yes. Yeah, it's an important piece for us.
Why do you find those holes and you're looking to fix them now?
Sure. Before they come a problem. Well, like I said, I view this kind of the same thing as, as trying to replace Augie. I mean, we're losing Augie at the end of this one year, but Jeff is ready to go. He's gonna be able to step into that role. I don't expect much drop off, if any at all, by the time July first rolls around. There's no, because we were looking at this four years ago and two years ago. So this is just another one.
So essentially, this would be a transfer from social services.
Yeah. Dane, you've got this on here for six months, so we can't really talk any dollars above and beyond this.
Right.
Do you have the ability in your budget? You may have to come back and ask later for November and December.
I could probably, I could probably absorb November and December.
Okay.
Because we haven't filled our, uh, level three network engineer position officially yet.
Yeah.
We have a contract person starting, uh, next week, but still you have multiple months there of a senior level position and a senior level salary that didn't exist. So if I had to, you know, if we wanted to bump this up, we could. I just use general first because it's easy numbers.
Okay.
All right. Um, Paul had made a motion to, uh, make a recommendation to budget board to transfer twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars from the social services budget to IT to fund a new, uh, trainer position in the IT department.
Okay, what's that? Moving slow, Dane. This person's already got a salary refund.
Why are we, what's this for?
Just transferring the money from social services to IT.
Just transferring the money from social services to IT.
So it's not from reserve?
Correct.
Correct.
Did I say from reserve?
I don't know.
Probably because my brain is not going to know.
That's the either. So I wouldn't be surprised if I did. Here all business.
It's the shirt.
Exactly.
At least I didn't wear the slam Diego. T-shirt.
Yeah. So this would not be an overall increase to the county budget at all. It's just moving from one place to the other. And then once he's able to take a look at it. Brandon had a good point about benefits and medical. I think Dane wanted to get this on so that we could get it to budget board before November one. So if, if he needs to come back, we can always move, if we need to move a little bit more from that social services budget. We're going to stay in line with what they currently have and make. I think this is actually a little bit less than what current salary is over there.
They already have benefits. Social services is already on benefits now. So.
Yeah. Well, that's true.
I just pointed out for future reference.
It would have already been funded.
Right. So I mean, just for future reference. So when he shores that up on his estimate next year.
Yep. Call the question? No. We got a motion. Do we have a second? We've got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye shall be the day. All right. Item seven, discussion, study and make possible recommendations to budget board regarding the county's plan to build a new jail. Got Steve Mason here.
Hi.
So Steve? And he's purported to know a little bit about those.
Hi. My name is Steve Mason. I've had the pleasure of chairing the citizens oversight board for the new jails since January of last year. Want an update on how to fund it? What would you like to know?
I think the big question.
I'm not sure what we're tasked with. I've heard that. I've heard it, but we need to do it quick.
I need to get a thirty-second update.
Whatever you guys want, Steve. I've had hours of conversations with Steve about this. So.
A thirty-second update would be great.
Great.
We need a new jail. Eighteen hundred beds cost six hundred and ten million. Twenty-four hundred beds would cost six hundred and eighty million. So staying with the six-ten, we have two hundred and sixty million dollars of bonds to build. Forty's already been spent like with architecture type venues. So we have two hundred and twenty million left. So we have a three hundred and ninety million dollar shortage. Several suggestions have been made. Go to a county, vote for an ad valorem tax for this gap of three ninety. The challenge is, I believe, the county bonding capacities, four hundred and eighty million, you've already used two sixty. So that doesn't work very well. Another option would be a county-wide sales tax. Another option's been suggested. It's called the lockbox option. With the increase of ad valorem taxes, the county should receive about two million this year. Last year it was five million to put into your budget. Some people have suggested we take that two million and put it in a box to fund bonds for twenty-five years, which would affect you guys in your new budget. If we did two million for twenty-five years, that produced forty-five billion. That's not quite enough. I received a, an email from the public suggesting we add a fee on tickets. That's an idea. And they have suggested a public-private partnership, which basically we borrow money from a private entity. If we borrow four hundred and fifty million, the annual payments would be twenty million, which probably the county budget doesn't have an extra twenty million.
Well, you just said we get two extra every year. So.
Yeah. We're at least eighteen, so we don't have it. So you take all these things, this, what's going on? They would say the only viable option would be assessment.
Mike, can you remind us, you visited with the assessor's office in Tulsa about their situation and their funding? What was that this year?
Uh, when I spoke with them last year, their sales tax, they had two sets of sales taxes. First, one is in support of the jail operations. The other is for more help. Both of them together generated thirty-six million in sales tax to operate their services there. They also included an additional six million in general revenue for their jail. So.
Oh, percent?
Yes. So total with forty-two million for their jail and facility. I've also pulled sales tax information for just the city of Oklahoma City for the July of this year, which was up more than normal, but for one month of income, it was sixty-six million for one month of sales tax, the city of Oklahoma City, which extends outside of Oklahoma County, of course, in the Canadian County and Cleveland County.
Oklahoma.
And I had not gone back and pulled all the cities for Edmond, Beto City, Gail City, Nicholas, all those to see a total number for Oklahoma County.
So, so do we, so we don't know what the actual number is? If, if, if the county were able to get a sales tax through, do we know what the number is by every quarter, every quarter penny?
Well, the city is at four and a quarter for that sixty-six million.
Okay.
So that would give you, I just thought of that number being countywide with all the other cities and coming into it, that if you were to do a quarter of that, you're probably looking at ten to fifteen million monthly at a quarter of that number, which is one percent. So if you did a quarter penny, then you'd have.
So what's the city's sales tax? You're saying it's four and a quarter?
It was sixty-six million this month, last month.
For July, pardon?
Yeah.
I'm curious.
That's also the use tax that goes with it, which would be for items that are purchased out of county that brought into county in which they pay a sales tax based upon that.
If we were to get to a point where we could acquire a sales tax, even at that quarter percent or that quarter cent, would it be our intention to ride that indefinitely? Or would it be a finite amount of time or?
In the discussions with my elected official, we, I have not even talked with anybody about this, but I see it as we need revenue to build the jail, but we also need. We also need that money even now to operate and maintain the jail.
So it would be indefinite?
Well, the whole thing.
It could be a big now and after.
Yeah. That's the whole thing that we're thinking of. A penny upfront and then as those numbers come to realization of building the jail, that they get scaled back based upon that for operation purposes only.
Okay.
That way you have revenue that you need to.
So start at a penny and then draw it back after.
Which I think that's like what Tulsa County did. I don't know if they started at a penny, but I think they had a higher amount in place to build the facility. And then after the facility was built, it lowered down. But there was still an ongoing, uh, an amount for maintenance and operation.
Also, do we know a percentage of, uh, that sales tax that is paid for by people that do not live in Oklahoma, Worth County?
No. The Oklahoma Tax Mission only breaks down monthly installments. It's.
Traditional.
It's, it's a bunch.
I think it's nearly half. I've seen a report on it somewhere recently somewhere.
So.
It's good too.
There is one other option. I don't know that's been mentioned. It would still require a vote constitutionally. Well, state of Oklahoma is a fractional assessment state, meaning we use a percentage of value of the property for tax purposes. If you had a hundred thousand dollar home, we currently have a fractional assessment rate of eleven percent. So that hundred thousand is multiplied by eleven percent to get you to an assessed value which we calculate your taxes. By while that assessment percentage can range anywhere from eleven to thirteen and a half percent. It cannot be increased without a vote of the property owners of Oklahoma County. But I just kind of ran some rough numbers this morning that if that were to be asked of the property owners of Oklahoma County, on general fund revenue, it would generate about eight and a half million additional money if you raise it from eleven percent to a twelve percent ratio, which is what Cleveland County is as well.
Eight and a half a million?
For general fund.
I just remember when I was in the legislature.
That is a tax increase. I mean, that's.
And this issue came up.
To people here and not to people that are utilizing services.
That's correct. The only time I can remember Representative Mike Shelton, Representative Sally Kern voting the same way on an issue was on hating the property tax. Because you can't get elected Oklahoma County if you like it. So I'm not, for eight million dollars, it's hardly worth being.
Yeah.
Just that I had, it had been thrown out.
That's essentially.
Well, it's good to explore all avenues.
Yeah. Eight million is still not sufficient.
We're saying what the options are. That's, needs to be on the table.
But obviously, we need to consider what would be most palatable for the people that are going to be voting.
The question that I have that. Has anybody, Steve, looked at, has the DOJ taken over other county jails somewhere in the country?
Yes.
And then what does that look like compared to what they could have done without DOJ's help?
Perhaps if DOJ takes it over, they might spend fifty percent more, a hundred percent more.
Then they'll put. Beyond our control.
To pay it back in three years.
I mean, and that's not a sales tax. That's on property.
That's, that's correct. Yeah.
Because I think that's going to be part of whatever discussion is. I mean, we talked a lot about we want a tax and it looks like it's, we just want a lot of cool things. What we're really doing is trying to get something that's sufficient at the best cost and not wait and have it forced on us.
It's very difficult to pay a judgment like that over a three-year period now. I mean, we're asking, we have questions from, I'm sure you get in the treasurer's office. You know, why are my taxes going up so much? I didn't vote for anything. I didn't do this. We deal with that every year. You can rehab it just a couple of months.
Would language on a ballot have to say that specifically for the jail or capital improvements or what?
The ballot language will be extremely important.
Yes.
It'll need to be as specific as possible, but broad enough to cover the subject. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
For instance, Canadian County got into some trouble when they did sales tax for their juvenile center and they included language in there that the sales tax would be to help pay for the operations of the juvenile center. Well, it was determined that the term operations didn't include what most of us would think would be operations. I mean, it was more like the facilities, not salaries and, you know, things to run the facility. So ballot language will be extremely important to make sure that, and we're covering what we want to cover.
I think that's necessary just so the public's aware of.
Aaron?
Can I just correct something that was sent a minute ago? If DOJ comes in, that is not something that goes on the tax rolls. So I want to make that clear. They can grant equitable relief, meaning they come in, they take over your jail and they take over your budget.
Yeah. Yeah. I was going to mention that as well. I've worked on several consent decrees around the country. That's, that's actually more likely the case, if they just take the budget for the entire county.
And I think that's going to be a part of the discussion, I think. Especially as these things enter the public domain and get banded around. I think it's, it's a huge disservice to just talk so narrowly just about the sales tax to do the jail, but it's talk about what all the options are, including a DOJ takeover, including the going from eleven to thirteen percent. I mean.
To understand that that is the best alternative.
I mean, part of this is to educate the public and get up to speed, like we're up to speed and get up to speed. And I think it's, I just think it's really something we all ought to be and have our bosses be more.
How many, how many units in Oklahoma County actually pay a property tax bill? Like, like, like how many people, like, so because I've grown using the property tax order, a lot of people live in a house, turn on the thing. So.
But they're still paying.
Not what landlord is.
Right. And their landlords charging their renters.
Trust me, I get that. I, so what I'm saying is like. So anyway, so, so what I'm asking is, like, how many people actually pay a property tax in Oklahoma County? Like, how many individual checks do you get? Two hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, a million and a half?
There's three hundred and sixty thousand total counts between real and personal and public service. Somewhere three hundred and fifty.
We could get you that for sure.
Three hundred and sixty thousand.
I was just, I was just trying to think. I mean, we, I mean, in a worst-case scenario, because I mean, we don't know what polling looks like either. I mean, because the last one we ran, we got smoked. I mean, so, I mean, I understand there's an educational component to it, but I think there's something out there on.
No, I would say that she wanted to lose, but I don't, I don't know what the polling was. I don't know if it asked about a DOJ takeover and gave all, what all the options were. Do we know how many people on average in the detention center are Oklahoma County residents otherwise?
How many what?
Are Oklahoma County residents versus they're from somewhere else? Kind of like what the sales tax.
I mean, it's hard to tell the people in the jail if we get arrested all over Oklahoma. So I mean, I don't really know. Yeah. The reason I was asking that is because it split up between four hundred thousand. I mean, it's, you know, sure that I'm good doing the property tax honors and some, the property tax, you know, but, but property owners, but.
Well, the reason.
Hundred million dollars, I'm just, I'll use your four hundred thousand people and there's two hundred people, you know, so.
The reason why I brought that up, and I, I know most of us around here understand, but I think others out there need to think that just because you're not a property owner, that it's not going to affect you. I'm a renter. It, I don't pay property taxes.
Your lease or bid, it's in your.
But I, I know.
If you live on a park bench, you get groceries somehow.
Unless you live somewhere for free and nobody is charging you, and who knows, they may start charging you once their property taxes go up. I mean, but, but yeah, it is a, a tax that will affect every resident.
Including those that are wholly considered sixty-five and over that are on the property assessment freeze. It's the freezing of value, not the freezing of taxes. So it's that rate changes. Either it goes up or down. Their tax bill is implicated in the same manner. So the only ones that would truly not be impacted are those that are truly exempt one hundred percent, hundred percent Native American veterans that qualify for that or a exempt entity such as a church, Bando State. Other than that, everybody would be impacted with the property assessment increase, yeah, or tax increase.
I've been thinking about getting ordained.
Exactly.
Steve, is your group going to, I should say, when do you think your group's going to have a recommendation?
So on our, tomorrow they're opening up the RFQs for this public product partnership to lend us the money. We're guessing it'll say, we can lend you the money for twenty million a year. And that goes to commissioners and you all. I'll probably say, well, I can't do that. So then, you check all these boxes, we're down to a sales tax. And I think October, November, we're going to make a recommendation and we don't like the recommendation. That's the only option we have. We're going to get a good indication. This quarter, city of Edmond, they're asking taxpayers there to raise ad valorem taxes to fund infrastructure. As you know, in Oklahoma City, with our geo-bonds, we vote, yes, our taxes don't go up. It's just replacing an old bond. We're going to have a good indication. Edmond will raise ad valorem taxes for infrastructure.
Yeah. That's what's coming up here in November is city of Edmond's pushing a geo-bond for, I think, two hundred million.
That's going to tell us a lot about Oklahoma, I think.
You put the infrastructure state question too. Ten mills. It's on our ballots now.
This might be a question for Aaron. Moving, I mean, we talked a little bit about the jail trust and not having a funding mechanism for liability issues. Moving forward, would a sales tax generate revenue that would support or be responsible for any liability debt incurred by the jail?
That's probably a better question for Bob.
Yeah. I do think, I mean, this is a difficult subject, difficult solutions. I think. Everybody getting on the same page and figuring out the best possible solution is going to be the, probably the most successful way forward. We've got other groups. I know your advisory board is going to make a recommendation to VOCC. Do we know if any of the other, you know, for instance, C-JAC and the trust, the criminal justice authority, I mean, they've got a vested interest in this? I think all of us looking at these issues and if the county has a recommendation from I think all of us looking at these issues and if the county has a recommendation from our advisory board, but we also have a recommendation from other entities, the trust, CJAC. It helps when we're getting as many people on board. And I'm not saying that a sales tax is the solution. That twelve years, almost twelve years I've been here, we've had tons of conversations and discussions about a bunch of different things and it has always seemed like the sales tax was the option that could get us where we need to be. I'm not saying that that is the only option. There could be something out there that I'm not aware of, that, you know, that we've not discussed. I think we need to try to get those forward if there are other things. If there's not other things, then we all need to get on the same side of the rope and start pulling together.
I would bet it from the standpoint that Oklahoma County is the only significant group. There's only two counties in the state that don't have a sales tax bill under the property to jail. The county has really been blessed not to have that part of it, being that we've been able to pay for all those items that were there going on, particularly building a new jail. That is more than can be dropped onto the county for that purpose in regard to assessments, property values. So it's one of those things, I think, that if people understood that they benefited all of these years without having to have that, where all the other counties that already had something in place that they had to address that, that that has saved them a significant amount of money over the years. I look at it as something that's not been asked or had to be tasked with. Now it's, it's a necessary item.
I mean, that sounds actually makes the most sense, but I mean, is there any indication at all what the opposition would look like? I mean, regardless of the polling, is there any idea what the opposition looks like? What is, what is the city's thing? I mean, does anybody really know the true feelings of the city?
Cody's sat through several meetings with the City Chamber of Commerce, trying to convince them. Maybe that's a good question.
Because I've heard a lot of time from some of those players that there's no chance we would support it and that's problematic. I mean, I know signs don't vote, but, I mean, when they're running five million dollar op camp, you know, op campaigns against us.
City Executive was at the last executive board meeting for City Council, I mean, Chamber, and he said discussions were moving in a positive direction.
Well, my, my question for the chamber would be, what ideas do you have? I mean, it's easy to say no, but what ideas? I can only guess where that goes, but from drawing on my experience with campaigns, I mean, we're nowhere near being able to pull off anything, even if the chamber was for it, I don't think.
Well, I think one of the ideas, the lockbox idea come...
Yeah, but you don't have the money.
And that's where, yeah, it's not near enough that would...
So, so I think that that...
No, last spring, the chamber was basically, no, because there has to be money in your budget. Cody, I've been over there several times. What's come back is the lockbox and the public private partnership that are discussed.
But you're saying the numbers don't get us there?
Yeah, those aren't viable solutions.
They're not viable, but they said we have to do it. Everyone in this room knows you don't have an extra twenty million dollars in your budget. But some people think it must be there somewhere.
Well, I was told when growing up that you can do whatever you set your mind to, but I've tried to walk to the moon several times and I'm really determined and I don't go there. So, I mean, it's just... To me, I'm curious what the pain threshold is among the voters in Oklahoma County, and I can't really tell that. The way I would go about it is I'd wanna have some, some initial polling, I'd wanna do some focus groups and roll out some options, see what, you know, how much credibility do different entities have? Who could you get to be for it? Who could be the person that can explain it to the public in a way that makes sense and is usable? Focus groups to figure out where do we draw the line, what do we include, what do we leave out? All of that. And I don't hear any conversations about that piece of it. And I don't even know, I'm new in that regard, sitting here, how you would go about that, but...
Part of the education component is, like you said before, is that the general public has to realize that forty to fifty percent, whatever, is gonna come from people who don't even live here.
So on my to-do list, the person with standing to pull this off would be Clay Benner, Larry Nance. Clay's been over this process for about five winters, so that's on my list to go talk to Clay. Jason may bring us to this right now. I'm gonna talk to Pat Farin the next two weeks, who's the oracle.
I mean, the polling initially, I guess, on the bond issue.
Just see what it says.
Right. Because it's a measure twice, cut once, for sure, or three or four times, because it's just... I know from my experience, property tax is probably a non-starter, but I think it's gotta be on the list of options and people can see this would generate that much and how do you cobble together a funding stream big enough to support this? And then the other way of funding it is just have the DOJ come in and take over your budget and then you lose other services on the other side. We'd all be applying to work at the detention center. So, because that's where all the money would go. I think it's... This needs to be on a sheet. There's no one place you can go now and get... I mean, there's nothing I can give somebody to go, here's what we're facing. I mean, people ask me and I kinda have to pull out a napkin and start writing stuff, but...
Two other options we're pursuing very quietly is asking for a federal appropriation of, I mean, twenty ninety dollars for medical budget. We're gonna try for that.
Is that the Medicaid waiver or the...
No. There's a deal. When, when we went over and talked with the chamber, I had asked them if they had thought about it, asking for appropriations, the federal, our federal delegation asking for just money from the general appropriations. And they indicated that it was too late in the year last year.
We're gonna try to ask them to work.
Try it.
I think Jason's other private question, Cody can speak to it. We hope legislation will be run next spring at the state to accept federal Medicaid dollars. If we need eleven million for Medicaid or in jail, we'd get eight. And then I'm gonna ask the legislature to fund the other three that have been stayed.
But even if we paid the state match, we're still ahead. Because you get the federal match you don't get now, so we can even afford to pay.
Yeah, and it depends on what we're talking about, because the piece that I asked Steve Bog to look into, I was on a call on that one, so this may be something different, but that piece that, like California and some others, were getting that waiver, that only applied for folks that had been in and that are being released into the community. So the vast majority of the folks that stay at county jail for any length of time, it would accumulate any medical dollars that would be a significant amount that we would need reimbursed. They do not leave our custody generally going in the community, they leave going into DOC custody, so we will not qualify for any of those dollars. Yeah, so it was a little disappointing.
What...
There may be something different. We're probably on the same. You're a little funnier than I am, I would say.
In people's experience, I mean, because I have done this, I mean, is it common to go like one basket of eggs on the agenda? Or is it unheard of to put forty-four different options each that give you a fraction of what you need? Do you see how I'm going? I mean, is it common that you, like, for example, in my own life, I mean, I don't, I don't ever think the only way that I can possibly do this is by selling up, limitate. I mean, I'm trying to figure out forty different ways to generate revenue to do a project.
But you would have to have all forty ways to pan out to have enough money.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, I think that, I mean...
So are you saying could we bond for a little bit more above the two sixty and then do a sales tax for...
And maybe a tad of the proper tax and maybe, I guess, I don't know, I just...
Well, and that's why I'd like to have the thing where you can see what all your options are and what they generate. And then go beyond, maybe start with some focus groups and say, how do you wanna do this? The business community, the neighborhood groups, go, what, how do you, how would this affect?
Well, like, for example, for me, I mean, and I don't know about anybody else, but every time, like, when my local school does a bond, you know, for example, I mean, like, I will know the background, so where did the penny come from? Like, where did, where did that, where did the penny come from? You know, is it, is it because the county has a goal to get it built and started on time? You know what I mean? Or is it just some round number that, you know, we're sitting on a porch and decided that number? You know, like, I think, I think, you know, in my mind, intention matters.
Oh, I agree.
And so I think that, and I guess that's what I'm asking, so, like, where do some of these numbers come from? Like, where did, where did the penny come from? Again, just because it was...
Well, additional question that I was reluctant to ask, but it, maybe this is where you're going, but the sixty-bed mental health piece, I know the construction of that would be paid for partially or totally by the ARPA money, but is that sixty beds, where did that number come from? Is that sixty that you take away from what you would normally have as a count on your detention center? So those beds would always be full or were you, that designed with a slack of ten or fifteen beds that wouldn't be? And I know people will be going in and then there'll be a part of the detention center that handles lower-level mental health issues. I just don't know what, where those capacity numbers came from to say it's gonna cost this amount today. And is that a penny or not over some years?
Well, and again, I mean, it's like, and I, I just heard so many different numbers, you know, like the size of the facility, you know, I mean, I've heard as low as six hundred beds, up to twenty-five hundred, I mean, we're talking four-time disparity in size. You know, and what I'm saying, intention matters, I mean, that, I mean, in the, in the sense of, I mean, strategically, I don't live in Oklahoma County, but, I mean, I think that, I mean, from our perspective, if you're a citizen right now looking on, I mean, I don't know how you wouldn't think that, that there's a mess going on over here, I mean, because...
Well, is there... Sixteen hundred came from the current count at the jail.
Okay.
We have fifteen hundred and thirty-seven or something now. And then they're looking at trending and, you know, where could that be in the future? So the twenty-four hundred is trying to account for any other growth that we...
Well, I think, well, I think that, I think that follows back into the question I'm asking, because, I mean, if you look nationally, unless the pencil is swinging, the population is gonna go down. I mean, we're decriminalizing everything, I mean, not to make it a political conversation, but, I mean, I can still have your garage and you can't do nothing about it. I mean, and the local cops can't either. I mean, so it's, I think that it's, I guess from that perspective, you know, and I mean, it's, I mean, all we hear on TV every day is how crime is now. We grimmilize it.
When we're building something that we have to anticipate storms and pendulums because it happens all the time.
Right.
We, and so I think, I think the BOCC has been pretty intentional about looking at something that is modular in expandability function down the road. But of all of us sitting around the table, Brandon's by far the most expert on this stuff. But whenever we're looking at the numbers, we gotta make sure that, and I know this is just talking about building a new jail, that whenever you're looking at the numbers, you can't just say, well, I, I think that based upon our population, we shouldn't have more than twelve hundred people in a jail. Well, okay, I get that, but what, you think twelve hundred, so let's just assume that's the right number. That's not the number that you build the jail to, because Brandon will attest that due to classifications and, you know, whether it's gangs, whether it's gender, you know, whatever, what is it, like a twenty-five or thirty percent cushion?
I mean, you haven't been able to top your facility.
Yeah, so at twelve hundred, a twelve hundred bed, you're probably two-house, twelve hundred people, it needs to be between fifteen and sixteen hundred bed facility. So if, you know, so I think when people are talking, they gotta make sure that everybody's clear. When you say, how many beds do we need? Well, are you talking about how many people we think are gonna be in it or how many beds do we need available? And I think sometimes people are, you know, one person is talking about beds needed to be available and somebody else is talking about, well, why in the world would you need that many when you only have, well, I don't anticipate all of them being full because we've gotta have empty space to be able to have, you know, segregation pods and different things. So I think that's extremely important to remember when you're looking at the numbers.
Well, that, and I think our county is growing, obviously, I see it in our assessments. I mean, new homes are built, how many things are being built? You see it in US census, population change from the ten to the same census. So I think that it would be very poor planning to vote or not vote, but to build a jail based upon our current numbers, seeing that our forecast is continuing to show growth in Oklahoma County. That would be my personal thought on that. Not by the good officials, just sorry, Aaron.
And I think our citizen advisory board, you've made recommendations on numbers and will continue to look at that. Jason and Brandon, I think you guys both bring up really good points. I think we need to be looking at multiple things. I think some of the groups that were mentioned today in here, whether it's the chamber, whether it's CJAC, the jail trust, I really like budget board having these conversations, because it's harder when, I mean, ultimately, it's the board of county commissioners that are gonna make a vote to determine whether it goes out, but their determination affects all of the elected officials. And I think budget board weighing in as well as those others and figuring out some of the different options that are on the table or that aren't on the table right now that maybe should be on the table, because maybe somebody has an idea that none of us have really ever talked about and it might be the magic bullet. Who knows?
Well, I think that is though.
But we need to have a list of these options and what kind of revenue could generate. I get what Brandy's saying, it's difficult on, on Brandon's question, if you are trying to do these fifteen or twenty different funding streams and you need every single one of them to hit to be able to meet your mark, then you got about a thousand and that's gonna be really difficult on something like that. So I think it's gonna depend on what are the options? What is the, the potential funding there? Because to Brandon's point, maybe we have these different options and some of them can generate way more revenue than others, so maybe you don't have to buy a thousand if you've got ten things, maybe you only need six of them. But it may need to be the right six. So I think it makes it more difficult to thread the needle when you got more things that you're trying to get through, but that may be what we have to do. But I think every, all these groups that we talked about, if we can get input from them and get plan from them on a plan moving forward, and then we all, you know, you may think we should do it like this, but, well, I guess that'll work. Okay, so I'm gonna get on that side of the rope and I'm gonna start pulling. I think we just need to all figure out a solution that will work and start driving it home.
Yeah.
What's the timeframe on this?
That was my next question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a timeframe, Steve?
Our numbers we have right now, the six hundred and ten million or six eighty are due through next July to start construction. At six percent inflation of that, considering there's a day, we aren't starting construction in July.
Right.
So, that's the timeframe.
And I also...
And the DOJ's timeframe, whatever that might be.
We would not be privy to that, but there's also the chance that voters, no matter what we think, because we can't spend money on polling and do all that stuff.
We can't, right.
So that's not in our hands, but there's a really good chance that it will be defeated. And we have to think of options at that point.
So you're saying this is either gonna have to be on the February or the April ballot?
For these numbers, it's still incorrect.
Yeah.
Which is tough.
Yeah?
I mean, again, this is just not my area of expertise. Is there a... These are my views only, but, I mean, we're trying to rely on an electorate that thinks that increasing subsidies is free somewhere, some way down the line, and we obviously know it's not. You know, and so is there a timeframe, again, and the people that have been in an office somewhere, is there a timeframe that we should run this where perhaps any more informed electorate shows up than just six hundred thousand people blindly voting party straight? I mean, do you see what I'm asking? Is there, is February or March better than November? Because in November, you might as well flip a coin at best, you know, for example. So, I mean, is there, is there a timeframe that we need to shoot for that's better than the other?
The low voter turnout this spring. They really are, late summer, it's a low voter.
But you'll have to have the money to drive here, get out the vote, effort. Assuming the other side will have a program to do that.
And we don't, you know.
Well, if we do, as a county, at least let us have enough foresight to go at the same time as we do the district one election if we can, you know?
Don't waste a...
Bring your thousand together.
But I, I, I think some of the alternatives have to be, what are the alternatives? If it fails...
I, I think we need a list of the potential things that are potential solutions. Maybe not all by themselves, but maybe a piece of the... not all by themselves, but maybe a piece of the solution. And then we need pros and cons to each of those, and does it work by itself? Because to Steve's point, the lockbox gets us forty-five million dollars.
Over twenty-five years.
Over twenty-five years. Yeah. Yep, and that's only a solution for the bill.
You know, again, and honestly, that comments like, you know, you know, comments by where, I'm assuming where that came from is, I mean, that's concerning to me, because, I mean, that's not even, that's not even a good faith effort on their part. I mean, right, I mean, so what makes us think that when they come up with solutions and says, "Well, just save forty-five million dollars over the next two hundred years", I mean, that's not even, that's not even legitimate. I mean, I, so that kinda concerns me, I mean, what, what, what level of support do they really have when that's, when that's the, when that's the solution from who's who of our great city? I mean...
The last vote was two thousand three, two fifths of the beginning.
Yeah.
And I got over eighty percent.
Eighty percent, yeah. So I know things have changed since that, but, but...
But I'm looking at this as though there's been zero public education. There's news stories, but not that inform them of what their options are and what the perils are of inaction. I mean, it's just, there's not been a concise thing I can find that does all that.
So based on your experience, like how long does an education campaign take?
How much did it cost?
I don't know, it depends on polling, but I would wanna have some, because I think we are gonna get in a situation where it's not just, you go to one well and get enough water, you're gonna have to figure out how you piece, maybe it's the sales tax, if that doesn't generate enough, that you get permission to bond some, up to a certain amount or something to cover the difference. But I'm assuming those have to be separate votes, you're gonna have to spend a few months talking to people. I, I, I mean, if you just trot it out there, I'm telling you, it's gonna go down fast.
Well, the only reason I suggested something as wild as putting three, four things on the ballot is because I'm by far the pessimist in my family.
Well, I don't know that you could do that, because I think you're gonna go, "Uh, no plan." I mean, I think it's...
Yeah, I think you need to come in with a concise plan.
Part of that, you're gonna determine by starting to educate the public, and you'll start to figure out what the pain threshold is, the direction they wanna go, the messaging you have to use to drive that.
So, and again, so that's what I was asking earlier, so, so generally speaking, does the public not see that as, well, the county's trying to ram this one idea down my throat, where they, where they think I'm smart enough to give the options? You know, and I guess that's what, what I, what I was really asking, you know, because in, in my mind, if we get, if four things are on the agenda and two of, two of them pass, we're not fifty, it's better than the zero we're getting now. I mean, yeah, you know, again, I don't, the, uh, the ignorant side of me, I just don't know how this, how this works.
Because I just, I mean, we've, and I know, looking at February or April ballot, I, I would just be nervous about us just, you know, sliding in the door like Kramer on this thing. I mean, to me, it's gotta be more deliberate than that. I mean, and I think part of it's talking to like Pat McFerrin, as Steve mentioned, and the conversations he's gonna have with Mr. Bennett and others, and I think you can start kinda checking that and see, you know, kinda where certain groups stand, and then at some point, though, you gotta translate it into the average voter, and the easy votes, no. So you gotta really make the case in a way that's understandable and, and on this kinda thing where it's, it's not a simple up or down thing, like you wanna pay any sales tax to support the zoo, that's pretty straightforward. This is a little more complicated now.
Even when you're dealing with key individuals like Mr. Bennett, you know, is he fully informed?
Well, and that's what I think we've gotta, I, I mean, again, I don't know that there's one page that anybody's been able to give me that shows me what our options are. If you do this, it'll raise this much money, and it's all of these kinds of things, and then where do we get the number for how many beds? Are the sixty beds gonna always be full and there's a waiting list? Or is that looking at having a slack of ten beds in case there's a surge? I, I don't know where...
It's just operational costs.
Well, in addition to that, right, we don't have enough to operate your jail, new one or two.
So go back to the education campaign, um, I, I get on board with that, I think that people who vote informed are much better off. So again, I don't live in Oklahoma County or Oklahoma City, and so whenever Oklahoma City's trying to push something big across, what does their education campaign look, look like? What if MAPS for education campaign look like for those that received a flyer or received a personalized video from Mayor Holt, or whatever it is they got, what, what did that look like?
Well, one, there's not organized opposition to those. Two, they have a track record of producing and accomplishing things by deadline on budget or under budget. We don't have that track record, um, like they do. I mean, the bigger, the MAPS sales tax, when I first moved to Oklahoma City, everybody's griping about it, the worst thing never happened, so maybe you don't hear that now. So we need a track record like that. This is our opportunity to start to establish it.
Or maybe, or maybe something more apples to apples. I mean, if anybody lives in Edmond, what did they receive when Edmond was trying to push a, a sales tax for their police, police and fire? Again, I'm just going back to the education, I'm like, what is it we need to be doing? Because I'm happy to toe my, my end of the rope, because I mean...
And I think part of that is talking...
People lived over a decade, so I get it.
That have, are more familiar with those kinds of local ballot campaigns. Yeah, I mean, that's, I just...
I'm not sure Pat's, I mean, his job's to take care of the chamber. I'm not, I'm not real sure.
Well, I'm not saying, but I'm saying somebody like that that does it.
Really well, we're not...
I'm not asking who does it, it's just, but I'm saying those are the components I would wanna have to do something like this when I've done these kinds of things years ago. I mean, I haven't done them lately, so I don't know, I haven't followed it.
So what we can do moving forward, budget board's wanting your recommendation from us, we can create a, kinda like we have our watch list, we can create a list that has potential funding solutions, um, for building the new jail. This is specifically to build, this isn't related to the operations after. Do you think that's something that we've gotta keep in the back of our minds? And so if people have suggestions or whatever, we can get it on there. Steve, I, I can work with Steve and try to, you know, whatever, some of the, you know, outside entities, whether, you know, it's the chamber or whatever, has ideas, I can coordinate with Steve on that list and get that stuff back.
If we're bringing that list to my committee in October, would you wanna do something like a top three or top four?
I think it depends on what it looks like.
And that we would, we're just kinda looking at the ones that you proposed, that we talked about, we would wanna rank those.
And you mentioned the going from eleven to thirteen percent, I think all that's been in here today, it's just cataloging, and if there's something that hasn't been mentioned today, we need to add it to the list.
That we could say every review of the ones that we've looked at, we prioritize the ones that we think, based upon our discussions.
I, I was actually unable to watch that budget board, and I failed to go back and do it. What was the timeline that they gave us to do?
They didn't, no, they didn't.
Okay.
I think they wanted us to have it done before it all went to hell, but we don't know that, we don't know when that happens, so we don't know.
He's getting a little bit warm though. You know? Hey, do we wanna do something like that, a top three or top four based upon, I think your recommendation or do?
And maybe it's be informing them, this is, yeah, this is where you can get this much money from doing these ten different things.
Just informational purposes.
Right, I think that's, well, you don't...
I think the best, I think a good approach right now would be to gather the information of potential things, and then once we know what that stuff is, that might guide, be a guiding light to us as to whether we wanna make the recommendation, or whether we just wanna provide the information, or provide three or four things, rank them, whatever. I think it'll, it's gonna kinda depend on what kind of information we get. Because I mean, heck, we only get two or three or four ideas.
I would only recommend a certain number, otherwise you'd get so many, it is, it could be confusing.
Well, I don't know that we're ready to recommend, I think it's just, no, just inform and then...
I'll bring back the list for Cody's help this time.
Okay.
We're meeting my committee at the end of October, and we hope to be talking about this list either.
So we would need special meeting, right?
Yeah. The meeting was...
I mean, one thing too, that I can try to ask some questions about, and Paul, I was talking to this article from Nondoc, it's really good, I mean, it's the most thorough I've seen in a long time, but there was a comment, I don't remember by who, that, you know, if you had bail reform and you did some other kinds of reforms, and you could deal with a seven hundred bed facility, which would be, you know, a two hundred and sixty million dollar range, well, I would not build to what law you hope ought to be, or think ought to be in place, I mean, the Whistler thinking thing, so I'm just, I think it's worth having that out there. If they do bail reform, great, but then I'd wanna let that concrete set a while to make sure the voters don't go, "Oops", and wanna go back and reverse course, so I think we're wise to look at the, the more robust facility, just me personally.
I know we've been to Nashville and those places, what, how large a facility, I mean, everybody looks at Nashville, population wise, size wise, similar.
Davidson County has three or, was it four? Facilities, they're, they're running multiple facilities.
They have a lot of visitors.
Yeah, they are.
Nash Vegas.
I mean, I'd be happy to catalog these things and send them back out to everybody to look at, I don't know, somebody to be the clearinghouse, if I can pull what was mentioned in here, if anybody else has got ideas, I'll add to the list, send it out to you guys, to the BET and State Human, whoever, and everybody, make sure it's got everything on there, um, if you want.
And I'll, I'll get with Steve and get his stuff, I mean, you and I can get together on the rest. You wanna do that? Um, Steve, what did you say you're meeting this, October?
I'm sure she knows. October twenty second.
She knows everything.
That's what the CO...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I see.
So I'm here, one, two, two, two days really to get an item on here for the final people, so if you want to do that.
Is this a Tuesday?
No, it's a Monday. If you wanna do it Tuesday, that would be twenty nine, and there's Monday, Monday's at nine thirty, all day.
You guys wanna do a special meeting on October twenty nine? That'll be the Tuesday after their meeting, and we can kinda discuss what their discussions would be.
So I'm gonna kinda bring back anything to the budget board next week.
I don't think we'll have enough information by then. So there's not an agenda item on here about scheduling another, our next meeting, but I will have Cassie send out something, and we'll look at doing a special meeting on the twenty eighth, or the twenty nine, nine thirty. And if that doesn't work for people's schedules, we'll get it sent out, just let Cassie know and we can try to move it around if we need to. Okay. But the plan will be sometime on, maybe, okay. Item A, discussion study, partnering with criminal justice authority and make possible recommendations, budget board regarding CJ's efforts to implement and assume full operational responsibility for providing medical care services to detainees.
They go, they go live tomorrow, it'd have been that, right?
Uh, CJ?
Yeah.
And I've been corresponding back and forth with Brandy and with Chris Sherman, and not a lot's changed since the meeting yesterday, but they are still thinking they don't plan on asking for additional funds for medical operations, and that they're still, um, currently getting quotes on the med mouse stuff, it's a big ticket item. So, I don't, he doesn't offer what the timeframe is on that, but...
What, what happens in that interim, where they take over and there's no med now?
It's moving out of...
What was your question, sorry?
What, what happens in the interim between, when we, when, yeah, tomorrow, and by the time, so if we're still getting quotes on malpractice, what happens in the interim time? I guess we will operate without it, I, I guess.
Yes. Well, we can try to walk to the moon, but...
I was very disappointed, that I was not able to get off the ground.
So what is the partnering, part of this language being just to...
I think the reason I wrote that that way, I remember, what I was thinking about was the pharmacies, this is an ongoing thing, is there a point at which we bring the, make pharmacy, the county pharmacy, is there a way to serve the juvenile, and then the detention center and those kinds of things? And that would be a partnership kinda thing, I think, just like, yeah, with council or whatever.
John's looking at that, that was before we started talking about expanding for more offerings for county employees. That was the first thing that I asked him to look into, is where we could provide meds for the jail.
I think you asked a question, but I just, that's why I wanted to, but we're still waiting on him, so there's nothing, right?
I mean, some of it is the, the blister packs and that kinda stuff that they have to have, and some of those meds are just so expensive that...
When they flush a lot of it now, they were gonna go to, to a conference where there were vendors that were gonna have machines that could do that. I don't know what those cost, they, I don't think they've been there and back yet, but I know that criminal justice authority is looking at ways, even simple things like that of trying to save money. And, and just, I saw, yeah, I just looked at the, the prescription contract they have for the, who, who they're reusing now, and it looked like they specified in jail medical or prescription services, and that a lot of stuff built in that was specific to a jail, that blister stuff, and then the machines, I saw that written in the contract and some other stuff. So they're trying to accomplish some of that stuff that we wouldn't be able to initially do. I mean, we're limited, I mean, a lot of what they use are the psychoactive drugs that we don't, wouldn't get through the county pharmacy, but that's why it's worded that way.
It's just me. We're sitting out here. Hey, get it, don't wanna can.
So I don't know if there's anything we can do on that one right now, until we know what happens in a little over a day. But I'm gonna just, I think, base some budget board action and keep those items on there. Talk about it or not next time.
Okay. Let's jump back to item four.
Okay.
Well, I wanna say too, that I just watched Steve and his committee, I mean, I don't know if they bumped your pace since you took that role, but I know it's kind of a Herculean effort with a specific skill set and experience, that I'm just grateful you, you and your committee are working on it. Um, I think we can be in the world of earth if we weren't, so I'm grateful.
So when Bertha Kenny announced we're going to the moon, actually sixty-two at Rice Stadium, said, "Sometimes we do things because we don't, you don't want to..."
Repeat today's of the moon.
To the moon, Alice.
Well, one of my favorite books, there's several by that name, but Moonshot, about how NASA, Michigan control, they didn't look for casting blame, they just, if there's a problem, somebody need to speak up, everybody swings into action, fixes the problem, and you keep it...
They had to solve it.
I mean, you don't have time to be sitting around saying they did it, I, so...
Well, and I think that's a good lesson for item number seven of today's agenda, that we need to take that approach.
Yeah.
So, okay, we got one last item to take care of, it's our meeting schedule for next calendar year, Cassie has an attachment of some suggestions, um, there is a suggestion that we... Um, there is a suggestion that we move our meeting time to start at one thirty. Um, that was a request from the clerk's office. Um, so these are the dates that are on here. I think Cassie has a couple.
I do have a few corrections. Um, I guess when I made these, I was looking too closely and I kind of correlated them, some of them in the same week as the Budget Board meeting. Obviously, we know that's not going to work, so I do have a few corrections. January has changed to the seventh, excuse me, to the seventh. Um, May has changed to the sixth. August has changed to the fifth. October, the seventh. And November, typically that would have been on November the eleventh. Obviously, we are closed that day for Veterans Day. I moved it up a week. We do have some conflicts on Wednesday and that Monday. So I figured moving it up to the fourth might be a little bit better option and it gives us some more time if needed.
You resend that out then?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we just?
Yes, so if you want to take this up, I can put it on the special. If you don't feel comfortable approving that today. Um, with those amended changes, I can put it back on for our special meeting if you wanted to do that.
So you like the one thirty, do you get along or lunch break?
The, the one thirty job works out better for us in general, yes.
So on the August one, why, why is that on the?
Um, because the Budget Board meeting's the fourteenth. Am I not looking at?
I would think it's the twenty, I think it's the twenty first.
It is the twenty first, okay.
Yeah, because the first Thursday that month is the seven, so the fourteenth is the second.
Okay, so then it would stay the twelve. I apologize for all that confusion.
August will stay the twelve.
August will stay the twelve. I apologize for all that confusion.
There are a lot of numbers to go with these.
We have a lot of them to do, so, um.
Yeah, we've got till December fifteenth, so we can put this back on. I think the biggest thing that Cassie wanted to know was for us to have the discussion about the time change because we've been one o'clock for so long. Um, I wanted.
We're creatures of.
To make sure that, it doesn't kill the constitution. I, but I wanted to make sure that everybody weighed in because there's some that come from off campus and I wanted to make sure that it was something that accommodated everybody.
Any, any meeting, any board that we have that meets at one, we are suggesting that they change to one thirty. So it's not just this, this commission. Okay, so I'll put it back on for next time.
Yeah.
Okay, with those corrected dates and again, I apologize for making. The meeting to address.
Roll the, that one, because we got a fine copy of Rice.
All right, any citizens that wish to participate, seeing the board conference, District two?
No, thank you.
Clerk? District three? Preacher? Court clerk?
Nope.
Assessor? Sheriff?
Nope.
Paul, welcome.
Thank you.
To the ET. Appreciate everybody's input, any new business?
Um, just real quick, just a quick question. Um, will we be having conversations about the contracts related to court services?
Oh, yeah, we need to have that on. Yeah.
I mean, I know it's just such a riveting conversation, but.
Well, we need to get on.
Yeah.
Right.
Go, go out to our special.
Just need to.
And we need to talk to.
Just all three.
Parties within, there's an MOU, is that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So that would be the DA's office, team and um. Yes. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, are you gonna win, that needs to be sent in, in item?
If I need to, can you please? Sure.
All right, is there motion to get out of here?
Second.
You got a motion, the same field, Jerry, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you need those? Ayes have it.